I will not hit the gavel. Yes, good morning, good morning, good morning. I want to welcome everyone to the Communication and Stakeholder Engagement Committee meeting, the first of the year, so I can say Happy New Year and Happy Early Valentine's Day, a day of love to everyone. Thank you for gathering with us today on a day when we started school late. So I wanted to make certain that all of our administrators were able to get into their buildings, to welcome their students safely, but they're here with us, so I appreciate that and everyone else in the audience. So before we get started, I just want to go around the table, introduce my colleagues, introduce our board staff, and then I will ask my colleagues a couple of questions and I'll turn it over to you all. So I'll start with Ms. Rivera.
Good morning, Buenos dias, Grace Rivera Oven, District One.
Good morning, Julie Yang, District Three.
Good morning, everyone. Sammy Said, really, really happy to be here on this two-hour delay day, so I got some extra sleep this morning, which was really, really great to have.
My daughter did too, so that's great to see you, Sammy, well rested. And then we'll go around the table. We have a new board staff member that we're so happy and pleased to have in our office. I'll let you introduce yourself and state your title.
Helen Lloyd, Board of Education Communications.
Very good.
Hello, Mr. James Lipinski, Communications Support Specialist.
Absolutely. So James is wonderful. You'll be able to see him when you come to our new board area. He's the greeter, first person that you see when you come into our office. And then we'll introduce.
Good morning, Celia Fisher. I lead Communications for MCPS.
And good morning, Chris Cram, Director of Communications. And we're going to begin today with Ms. Fisher.
Absolutely. So great to have you join us. I want to ask my colleagues, did you have any edits or additions to the informational summary? Okay, so in keeping with our theme, our theme is valuing the voices of our community. In September, we gathered and we were able to have a discussion with our community partners. We wanted to value their voices and all that they contribute and bring, not only to our students, but our staff and just the resources they provide to our families. So today, we're going to value the voices of our faculty and our staff and just really hear our communication plan, what's happening in our schools, particularly around serious incidents. Our families want to ensure that when they drop their students off, that they are left in our good care and keeping. And so much is going on in society today, and oftentimes, that makes its way into our schools. So we just want to reassure our families that we have it all covered, we have it all together. I am not afraid to say my age, I am 52 years old, and so when I was going to school, the concern, it seemed like, was who's running down the hallways, right? Who's talking back to teachers? And today, it's a little bit different in terms of what our students have to endure as well as our staff. So I will kick it over to Ms. Fisher to discuss with the overall communications plan. And then we'll hear from a variety of staff in our school system as well as our partners, because this is like a cross-functional work, right? We can't do this by ourselves. We do it in collaboration with a lot of people. And just want to say in advance how much we appreciate the work that goes into what you all have to do on a daily basis to make certain that everything functions well. So I will kick it over to you to talk about the communications that's happening and look forward to discussion. And my colleagues just know this is going to be an engaging discussion. We don't have to, if you want to just insert yourself, turn your light on. And then we do want to be mindful of time. We're ending at 12:00. And if we go a little bit, that's okay, but I just want us to be mindful of time, okay? Tight schedule, we want to get to everything. I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Fisher.
Thank you. Good morning again. Again, I'm Celia Fisher. I lead Communications for MCPS. And I'm here for the moment with Chris Cram. We're going to give you a very brief overview of the Office of Communications. And we're pleased to join the conversation today about how that communications is conducted during and following serious incidents that may occur at Montgomery County Public Schools. So first, a quick reminder of the key areas of work of the Office of Communications, each of which plays a role in supporting the schools and the district connections to our community. So those are MCPSTV, the Language Services Unit, which is called LASSU here, the Web Services, and the Public Information Office. Together, these four areas form an important bridge between the central office and individual schools and school communities, hoping to ensure timely dissemination of important updates, policies, and initiatives to all the stakeholders, including keeping parents up to date during times of serious incident. But it is the school administrators playing the crucial and central role during these times, and today, you'll hear more about those roles, how our roles are designed to work together for our communities. Importantly, I should note that these processes, procedures, and protocols are of utmost importance, but they are not written in stone. We are all committed to a constant seeking of improvement, openness to feedback, learning from each experience, and adjusting to serve our communities better during serious times. We do learn from every single incident that occurs, and we are constantly getting feedback from the community about how we might change, how to deploy technology behind what we do, and how to, you know, communicate better with the students who are in the buildings. Okay? While the four areas of the Office of Communications each become engaged at some level during incidents, the Public Information Office sits front and center in this discussion. Mr. Cram, having served in that capacity for many times of serious incident, is here to add a bit of detail, so I will turn it over to him to discuss that.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher, and thank you, members of the Board of Education. Microphone, take mine as well. We've brought a number of voices to join us in a few minutes today. I think we'll really reflect what Ms. Fisher just talked about, our willingness to learn and adjust and improve as we go along, and to represent the full gamut of communications from the onset of serious incident or crisis to supports towards the end. So as Ms. Fisher said, I'd like to speak primarily for a moment, if I may, about the charge of the Public Information Office, which constantly executes a variety of complex tasks. Starting with media relations and public relations, we develop relationships with media outlets, everything from CNN, The Washington Post, and the National Public Radio Service, to Telemundo and Univision and local outlets like MOCO 360. We serve as the primary point of conduct for media inquiries, and we proactively pitch stories about the school system to enhance its positive public image. We focus on clear and consistent messaging. By doing so, we seek one band, one sound. We help to align the efforts of schools and the central office, and we hope, in turn, by doing this, to promote transparency and accountability. We connect audiences to actionable information through various channels such as social media, newsletters, email updates, video products, and even community events. The Communications Office actively informs parents, students, and educators, and other stakeholders. During the pandemic, like no other time, actionable information was so very important, the Five Things Every Thursday grew out of that, and it continues to be one of our most popular newsletters. We highlight and promote the achievements, innovations, and success stories within our school system, celebrating accomplishments of students and educators and schools while enhancing the overall reputation of the district. We provide support for initiatives and events, whether system-wide educational or program initiatives, or even this Board of Education meeting. The Communications Office provides support and resources to the district, helping to enforce both the general and target audiences. And finally, to what we're really here about today, in times of crisis or emergencies, we play an important role in disseminating accurate information, correcting misinformation, reassuring the community, and coordinating responses to ensure the safety and well-being of students and staff. But it's not just us, there's so many of other people in the system, both in central office and in schools, and those are the stories that you'll hear today. So a vital time of communication, as you can imagine, for any school community is during a serious incident or crisis. This is a significant part of the presentation here today, during which you will hear how the school system responds to a serious incident, the communications that are part of, and how we collaborate with external partners. You will also hear about best practices recently used by schools in support of outreach, and transparency as a result of that serious incident. So if there are no questions in this moment, I would like to invite a few people to the table. Yes?
Yeah, super quick question. Thank you for that. I think, you know, you guys obviously have a very in-depth process for all of your communication. And one thing you mentioned that I know I always look at is the Thursday Five Things to Know. And you said it's very popular. I'm very curious, do you have a figure on how many people view that every time, every week you guys send it out?
So that's a bit of a pain point. We do have hits, because it ultimately is a webpage, and it averages between 8,000 and 10,000, depending upon the content there. But we're also implementing, and I'd like Ms. Fisher to talk about this, a new newsletter system where we're going to get far deeper analytics about the messages that we send, which will help us tailor the content in them. Ms. Fisher?
I think you've all heard me say repeatedly that one of our goals is toward brevity, and that brevity has to do with equity and how we are able to communicate with all of our audiences and in all of the languages that we use. And so one of the tools that we're starting to implement is called Axios HQ, and it is a different platform for communication through newsletters, and it has much deeper analytics. It also uses AI to tell us when we're not being brief, and to help us with the, you know, sort of focus on one big thing in each communication, and then to spill through it in a more concise and precise way. We are starting that communication with our, we're testing it with an internal communication called This Week in Comms, which we're going to disseminate to a select number of staff. And then we'll start to understand how it works better and what the analytics are. The one thing that Chris was mentioning is, you know, in the Five Things to Know, we can know, you know, sort of the general statistics on the newsletter itself, but then the links within it have separate analytics. So, you know, one story may be a lot more popular than another, one piece of information than another, and we also learn from that what it is that the audience is interested in, and, you know, we iterate based on those analytics.
Great. So you do plan to use this during the school year for messaging? Great. And will it just be for like the big newsletters, or do you think that it could possibly have applications in other ways as well?
Well, you can, we can talk about how we can integrate that with the Technology Department, but it is a separate tool, and there are sort of data requirements that we have to work our way through. So for right now, it's internal, and then we'll see how we can move it external.
And anything, any tool, any action, anything that we learn that gets us to communicating what's the one big thing that people need to know, we feel it's going to be really successful with our audiences. When people are scrolling, or on their computers, or hopefully still watching a little bit of television, you know, right? They don't have time for maybe everything. But if they can find and quickly get to the content that is important for them in that moment, today, for example, schools are closed two hours early. People aren't really interested in too much else at 7:00 AM. So.
I'm sorry, schools are closed two hours early? No, they started two hours late.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Correcting misinformation.
Right, see, see, I'm doing, and so.
I heard what you meant, though. Yeah, yeah.
So please, no, stay in school the full length. Your buses will not arrive early to end the day. So anyway, but yes, and one of the things that's always important to us, and feedback that I know that you've heard at the board table, when people come to offer public comments is "I didn't know." So anything that we can do to fight back the "I didn't know that."
Great. I really appreciate that message, and thank you for answering my questions. This is really, really exciting, and I'm looking forward to the work that you guys are going to be doing with communication for the rest of the year and the years in the future.
Turn to my colleagues, Ms. Rivera. Do you have any?
Just very quickly, I appreciate it, and I'm looking forward to getting also some, just, as you know, with such a diverse school system, so your communication plan with that diverse community is important to me, because I still, you know, think that just translating things doesn't mean that you're getting the information to folks. To me, translation is just, is not the best way to do, there has to be a cultural component to it in order to be able to get to certain communities. So I'm looking forward to hearing what the plan is on that.
Absolutely. We do want to make sure that all of our parents or students, any of our community members are able to access the information the way they best receive it. And so I did get my 5:00 AM text, right?
I did want to say that we work very closely with Elba Garcia and her team to, you know, try and determine the best ways that we are communicating now, how to expand those, and again, what are the new and innovative ways that we can start to deploy messaging to our various communities. And so she's deeply involved with us in that process.
All right. So with that, are we moving on to the next portion?
Yeah, with that, if we could invite a few folks to the table, Mr. David Adams, Mr. Peter Moran, Mr. Damon Monteleone. Another individual that was going to join us at this time, Director of Emergency Management and School Safety, Ms. Michelle Isafur Andrews, is not going to be able to join us immediately. She'll join us later for questions. There is an issue that she's dealing with in her office. But the three gentlemen joining us now will certainly be able to speak to Incident Command, which is a significant part of her role in crisis response.
Good morning to you all. This is the portion I'm sure everybody is looking forward to hearing from. And I didn't mention, back in December, we had our annual meeting with our student leaders. And at my table, I heard quite a bit from our students, and so we will hear from them next month in March, and so maybe they'll share some different, some additional information. So I appreciate you saying, Ms. Fisher, that there's a willingness to learn and to adjust, right? And so I will let whoever kick it off, but looking forward to hearing from you all.
All right. Good morning, members of the board. David Adams, Acting Associate Superintendent in the Office of School Support and Well-Being. Glad to be here with you this morning. If we could have the slide deck come up on the screen? Perfect. So as you stated earlier, one of the things that we want to make sure is that we're communicating and during serious incidents for our families to understand what is happening during an incident in our schools. That's one of the ways that we can rebuild trust, to ensure that there are strong systems in our buildings for families to know what is going on. We've worked with our schools, especially, we know that, you know, in the age of cellphones, communication travels fast, right? So we want to really build the capacity of our principals to own that message, to be able to send out the communication that's happening within their buildings. So we've worked with our schools to ensure strong processes for communication with students, families, and caregivers. Next slide. So in this communication protocol, this is a protocol that the Office of School Support and Well-Being, alongside our system-wide safety and security team, developed to ensure that schools were working from the same playbook. So in this, you see a step one, right? Calling 911 in an emergency, all the way through, holding a staff meeting after. I've seen some excitement, is that what I'm sensing right here?
You know what, so I'm going to stop you just for.
Please.
I think my colleagues can't really see the PowerPoint. If there's a way that we can work to get copies for them, that way we'll let you continue your conversation.
Absolutely.
You'll be able to look as you talk, but go ahead.
All right. I know, it is kind of hard to see.
It's okay, but yeah.
But in step.
We can listen, we can.
Okay. Step two, schools are calling their cluster coordinator's security to, you know, alert them of an emergency at the school. They're working with their director and associate to think about next steps and ensuring that that first step in communicating to students, families, and caregivers occurs. We want to make sure that there's a cadence of, you know, of 20 minutes during that incident that we're communicating in the event that schools can do that, we encourage them to do that. If not, then we've got our wonderful communications department that is waiting in the wings to support schools with that communication.
That's important, so I'm going to stop you right there.
Please.
You're saying that in the event that the school cannot immediately reach out to the parent, because that's what parents want to know, and they want to have happen as quickly as possible, within minutes of it happening. But you're saying that if the time, like, depending on the incident, if it allows, you'll do that, but if not, the communication will come from central office?
That's correct.
Okay.
And we do, we do have multiple backups, so this office can support schools when they are in that situation. A perfect example is if the incident means that there's no power at the school, right? They can't get on their computers.
Yes, and so it's critical in that, in that time, that the director and associate or associate, and step three, as you can see, is available to, you know, work with the principal in that moment to determine whether or not they can send that communication. I'll give you an example, Wooton High School had an incident right after the Thanksgiving holiday. They were evacuating, and the principal was not able to send that communication out. So working with the director of that school, I was able to then support centrally to get that information out, although late, right? We want to make sure that we try to get that, we follow that cadence of every 20 minutes, but we are standing by in the event that the school cannot communicate.
So here is I, where I would like to get some clarification.
Sure.
First, good morning to everyone. Good morning. One of the consistent themes that we have heard from students and families is, what's going on? We want to know, right? Because like you mentioned, in the age of cellphones, things, if there is nothing from the school, from the official channel, then there's a void, then the rumors start, or people get anxious. So typically, can you, I know every incident is different, every situation is different. What's the expectation parents and family can have in terms of how fast they can be, you know, communication will come out?
So I'll chime in, thank you for the question, Ms. Yang. So we've committed to 20 minutes, within under 20 minutes, if there's a, you know, a lockdown shelter situation, that we're going to get communication out within that 20-minute timeframe. I think one of the things I just want to, just to build off of what Mr. Cram was saying, is that we need to move away from this archaic time where principals are waiting for approval on communication, right? So we've created a culture where a lot of principals are feeling somewhat paralyzed because they're waiting for someone to give them the green light. And a lot of that, I think, has to do with just the timeframe that we're living in, principals maybe not feeling the same level of autonomy that they had prior to the pandemic, the same control over their school, which they're asking to have back. So that is one place where we are. One of the things that we've done to address that is establish just standard messages that are pre-approved. You don't need to communicate with Mr. Cram, with Mr. Adams, with myself, they're uploaded already, they're translated already, so they're ready to go. We can send them if they can't send them, but they can send them without any approval going through our comms office, so that they're already there. So that helps us trim down that timeline, get underneath 20 minutes. The other thing in terms of the central communication coming out is, we have to understand that our principals are dealing with very serious incidents, and their focus shouldn't be on communication out to the community. It should be on handling the incident right in front of them. So that is something that we need to continue to improve, but those are some of the safeguards that we've put in place so that those, those things, you know, don't have to go through this kind of chain of command to get out to the school community, to the students as well.
Can you give us an example of one of those, like, what would it look like, one of those communications that you said are already pre-done?
Certainly. So if a school, let's say, goes into a lockdown because of a threat in the community of someone being armed, or someone, you know, a crime taking place that's in close proximity to the school, what would happen is that our cluster, you know, security supervisor or the police that are, the CEO would notify. the police that are, the CEO, would notify the principal. Principal then could immediately go into our system, upload the message that is about just a lockdown. You're talking like three to four sentences. And I think this gets to some of Ms. Yang, what you're, what you're alluding to, is that we can't, we, I think, part of what's happening and what we need to work with our community on is that sending out communication that has information that's not factual in it, and we've seen this play out in some other situations, has resulted in a heightened level of anxiety, has resulted in people taking actions. And then we have communication coming into the school from parents, from what they read on Twitter. And so one of the things that Mr. Cram, and I want to compliment him, has done a really great job of through some of the incidents that we've experienced, such as the one I described, is ensuring that the PIO for the Police Department and our Communications Department, that they're not getting ahead of us. And so we're often seeing is, in some cases, and we've learned from, is that the PIO for the MCPD sends out communication via Twitter, and we don't, and sometimes there's not, it's missing details, and then we're trying to course correct because they've beat us. So the, we need to coordinate the speed factor that's taking place between these, you know, kind of competing entities around how to get this communication out.
Okay. So thank you for that. Now, let's dive a little bit deeper into, you know, these serious incidents of lockdown or shelter in place. And I think you mentioned something about, okay, maybe we coordinate with our partners in MCPD, right? So get the same message. But then constantly, we're still getting from our family and students feedbacks, say, but this communication doesn't tell me anything, right? This say, oh, this is school in lockdown, maybe something on campus. Police is on scene, on campus, or something like. People find it vague to be anxiety-provoking, right? I know that we probably have policies, or how much we can say, how much we can't say, you know? So I want to have a better understanding, the choices of words that we use, or at this time and age, are there rooms for improvement so that it's going to be out there on Instagram, X, or something else? I'm just trying to understand the situation, yes.
If I could just, oh--
I was just gonna say, is there, so in responding to Ms. Yang, is that somewhere in point four, five, six, seven, or eight, or no?
Yes.
Okay.
So if I can draw your attention--
So let's let him finish, and then--
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
Draw your attention to the last part of this is where we do a summative communication. Typically, when a principal is in the middle of handling a serious incident or a crisis, we want to just get the information out. And they don't have too much information because they're trying to figure out the details and the facts, bring it all together, work with the Police Department to ensure that that information that they are preparing to send out is going to be factual. At the end of the incident, right, we generally have principals send out a summative communication where they have all of the facts, and they're able to share that piece of, that more detailed communication with the community after the post-incident review. So it really is just about, we're in the middle of the incident, I'm just communicating to you that we're okay, we're locked down, we're sheltered in place. And then thereafter, when all the facts are ready to be shared, they generally send out that summative communication at the end of the incident, the wrap-up.
Sure.
Okay.
So we were in, we were in step four before we--
So it's, I don't think this is to your direct question. Why don't you go first?
No, no, I just wanted us to go back, and you can finish, so that we can ask you questions then.
Mr. Cram, did you want to respond to something that--
Well, only to say this very quickly, is that at the beginning of an incident, and the more serious it is, the only thing that is factual at that moment is often a level of confusion. So all of these messages every 20 minutes or so is a progression of more, getting to the point where we're providing actionable information for families, especially around reunification or dismissal, things like that.
And my hope is that having this conversation and our community being aware of it, that there can be an increased level of trust in the school system to know that, you know, in the past, we've done things one way, where they may not have gotten all the information that they needed at that time, but since, we've made corrections, enhancements, adjustments to ensure that we have a smoother process to be able to get the information to our families as quickly as we can, and responding as often as we can, which is what I heard us say at some other point, that we try, I don't know if I could be exact, but we were saying that, and Dr. Moran, I think it was you, you came to our committee meeting before and gave us some touch points, some just, where you said, we'll try every 20 minutes or so to kind of keep people abreast of what's going on in the event that we're not able to give, you know, full detail. So I like that what change that has come about is at the end of it all, that the principal in the school will give a summarization, right? Because who knows their community best, and who do parents want to see the message come from the most, which is their principal, right? So I like that we've made that adjustment. So as we've, as I've heard you say, what we'll continue to do is make adjustments and make changes. But just, I just want our community to know that I'm a parent of a MCPS graduate and of a current student, and we care about the safety of our students. It's a high priority. So we'll let you continue through the numbers, if that's what you want to be able to do.
Ms. Evans, just real quick, just because we're on this, a quick suggestion. If there isn't already something in the pre-approved messages that clearly says, this is all we're able to clearly state at this time, this is all we're able to fully confirm, I think that'd help a lot. I don't know if that's already in there, but a very clear piece that says that, I think, would help out a lot.
And I, real quick, I just wanted to add the reality of the situation when we're dealing with some of these serious incidents, is that often, we don't want to communicate information if there's a threat internally within the school, because that individual may very well be receiving the communication that we're putting out. And that's just the reality of the situation. I think a lot of this, to go to what Mr. Adams was sharing around the before communication, is we need to really clearly and explicitly communicate to all of our community members what they can expect from us, and why information may be looking the way that it is, or might not be as in-depth at that certain time. And I will say, I don't feel that we have done that in a way that there's a common understanding across the system.
And that's why I would put in the pre-approved message, put a line that says exactly what you just said, we cannot release all the facts at this time, this is all we fully know, whatever. That way, when people get the message, and they're like, why does this not say anything? It says it in the message exactly why.
And what I'm hearing as a next step for us is to really message that to our community broadly, that here are the steps, right? If you don't have that information, here's why, right? So we can create a message that comes from our office in conjunction with safety and security that just unpacks what this looks like from a family's perspective.
Just the fact that you say you're trying to do communication every 20 minutes, that itself is a great reassurance to the family. I don't think everyone is clear on that. And so that's why it's so, so they are hyper nervous, right? Because they don't know what to expect.
And even saying that we haven't gotten it right in the past, and here's what we're trying to do going forward, is helpful to people, because we don't claim to be perfect, but I appreciate you stating that. Okay.
You'll hear throughout this meeting later that as we huddle and support our incidents, we're also in that same moment reflecting on how we've done. But what those early messages say now in those templates is, more information as it becomes available. Maybe that needs to be strengthened.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So this internal document is really an opportunity for us to ensure, again, that we're following the steps in response to a serious incident. So we were at step four, that's the school onsite emergency team that is enacted in a serious incident. And we have our, we ask our schools to connect with their parent leaders, your PTSA, your NAACP rep, so those people can help navigate what's happening for the, you know, in support of the school. And again, we're sending messages every 20 minutes to staff, parents, and students. And then after an incident, we do the, we conduct the on-scene post-incident review. And you see, we're working with our MCPD, the OSAT team, and the director and associate as a part of that conversation. This is just an opportunity for us to make any upgrades, you know, and review the incident to see what went well, what upgrades do we need to make in terms of an incident happening again on campus. So we'll go to the next slide. And as Dr. Moran mentioned, we've got a repository of communication templates that are already translated. So one of the things that we ask school leaders to do is to think about who on your OSAT team is responsible for sending this message out. Again, if you're the principal, you're trying to manage to ensure that everyone is safe. You can't sit at your desk and send out a communication, but if you're in a lockdown, you can assign somebody who can go and get those generated messages and use the Remind app to send out to the school community. So again, this is just the repository. And as you can see, this aligns to step three and six of the MCPS protocol that we've developed with safety and security. I'll stop there.
Quick question.
Yes.
Define, or is it somewhere in the document, "serious incident"? Because that could mean a lot of things to a lot of people. So if you could help us with that, because we as board members get calls all the time at parents, and they're, although they are incidents, they're not in that category of serious incidents. And sometimes they get very upset, why wasn't I told? Why wasn't something sent to the community? So if somebody could do that for me, that'd be great.
I can start a little bit with that, and then I would ask, I think Dr. Moran--
Thank you.
--help me out. So you're absolutely right, there are incidents. There are things that we absolutely should share with our school communities, and it can range from something that maybe happened in a classroom that should be communicated to the families of that classroom, all the way up to something that is serious and crisis that goes beyond the school community to the entire community. So a judgment call has to be made. And in the spirit of ongoing learning, we're reevaluating when we use the words such as "serious incident" and words like "hate" and "bias," right? Because communication not only needs to be factual and transparent, but should represent and be reflective of our values and, as a school system. And so we're thinking about that, adjusting our language. We receive, like you do, feedback on our letters and our communication, and it only stands to reason that they, that we review that.
And I guess one of my questions is, in your template before, when you call, when you call 911 for assistance, is that then by nature considered a serious incident?
I think on the face of it, certainly. Let's take the instance of perhaps a student fight in school. Per memorandum with the police, you absolutely do call for emergency services if somebody's been harmed, if there's serious bodily injury, if there are multiple students involved, if staff members are involved or hurt. It becomes something more than perhaps a disciplinary matter, and both police and emergency services, rescue services, if there is injury, are of course called. And as I understand it, that's when a police report is made, right?
So just short and sweet, anytime that 911 is called by a school, it's, they must report it to our office as a serious incident, every time.
And if it's reported to your office, does that have to be reported to the community?
Not necessarily, no. It depends on the, what we look at is the impact on the community. If it's an isolated incident that takes place, or it could be that it's an emergency situation where a student has a health emergency, that is in an isolated part of the building where other students aren't exposed to it, then we don't, we wouldn't send out a community message. So we look at the, we look at the impact on the student population.
So, Ron, help me understand, then, who assesses that? Who makes that decision?
So we, well, so we collaborate with the school to collect all the, you know, the specific information about what happened with our communications department, also with safety and security, and make a decision based off of all the factors that we've collected to determine if a community, communication needs to be sent out.
So all the questions that Ms. Rivera is asking is, are all these things considered in your huddle? Like when you--
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And if you get information later on, that is not all the information I got earlier, like if you get new factors, whether from the police, or witnesses, or whatever, then do you again reassess it and reevaluate it to see if that is worthy of communicating to the community?
Yep. And there are times where we send out communicate, you know, where an incident happens, you go through the process of, you know, securing the safety and security of the students, the staff, the community, and you start to do fact-finding, either in collaboration with MCPD, or if it's kicked back over to the school, and then you realize that the impact has been more significant than you first had assessed, and then you send out a communication at that point.
You know, I don't even know if people really consider or think about, maybe they have, but in listening to everything that goes on, because we know as board members that it's a really detailed, complex issue, and that people take it seriously. But I don't even think people really think about how much time a serious incident might take, just for that one incident, right? Because you're gathering together and trying to make a myriad of decisions, right? And how you respond, and what will happen in the moment, and even afterwards. So I just wanted to kind of shed light that I don't even think that people really grasp how much time is spent trying to ensure that everything happens smoothly and things--
And I would ask that you keep that thought in mind as we bring up our principal representative today. I think that's a theme that you'll hear in her presentation.
And I have a comment and a question. So one comment is, I think the summative write-up that you mentioned earlier is really helpful. And I actually have used that when we got that, to help when a community member reach out to us, because they will, they might be things they hear throughout the day, or they might see other posting, social media posting. And then when they reach out, if we have that summary letter, I can say, oh, actually, you know, this is what happened, right? And so that, in a lot of social groups, that can be a very, because it comes from school, it's official, and it carries a weight, right, for the, for the community, so that they're not just getting peace messages from all different places. So really appreciate the summative email. My question is, I see our directors and principals in audience. What you have shown so far is how complex this has gotten to be, right? And how many people are involved in it. And this, this time of day, school leadership is really, has a lot more different components our school leaders have to navigate with the central office support. And every emergency or situation, it's unique in its way. So I hope today, or if not later, and now you can explain to us and the public a little bit, the training our principals get, right? And the support we get, because we have 211 schools, and principals have various different experiences. So, you know, how are we, how are we supporting, training our school leaders to handle these situations?
Ms. Yang, hello. And board members, and Ms. Evans, and Ms. Rivera, and Damon Monteleone, one of the associate superintendents in the Office of School Support and Wellbeing. And I do support, I don't supervise schools directly, but I have all the Wellbeing Student Services. To speak to that, and I can, and pass it back to the school supervisory associates in a second, we have, over the last several years, this isn't something new, right? So certainly after the pandemic, and in the wake of the tragedy at McGruder several years ago, there was a huge undertaking to align everything that we do for our training to best practices in the state of Maryland and with the federal government. So in the summer of 2022, there was a mandatory training for all of our principals, our assistant principals, that included our partners in Montgomery County Police Department, that level set, really, for the entire district coming back from the pandemic, and then moving in-- And then moving into the 2223 school year last year, we have a seri, we have office hours on a monthly basis with all of our principals. And what that is, is on the second Friday of each month, the associate team works with other offices and directors throughout the district so that we can center key components of district work for principals and provide information and to be able to take questions and provide clarity on processes. So, throughout that time period of 2022, right? We would have office hours to go over a litany of these things. It could be crisis response. It could be reporting on hate bias or bullying incidents. It could be any number of things dealing with discipline, suspensions, using the code of conduct, anything under, really, this umbrella. And that's not to set aside the work that we would partner with our communications office or with HR, what have you. So, these happen, I would say, on a quarterly basis, right? You would have that touch point on these last year. Then this past summer, in August, we had a mandatory, and all of this is mandatory, right? But we had another mandatory meeting that was really a training at Walter Johnson High School. I forget the day, it was either August 14th or 16th, where we had every single principal and administrator come. And it was three hours. And, and literally, we, we hit everything from sexual harassment to hate bias to bullying to incident response to suspensions to ten and E to anything you can possibly think of under this umbrella. And then we took attendance, we followed up, it was accountability. We had makeup sessions. And so, we ensured that every single principal and administrator had that training there. And then throughout this school year, we have had other touch points on these issues for, with regard to, in, in our office hour space, right? So, I, I don't know if there's anything more specific that the associates wanted to share on that.
I, I was just going to add that, that, that Mr. Adams and I had worked with the directors to ensure that. So, there's the, there's the, the kind of stand and get training. But with, with serious incidents like this, there's, there's the application of it. And the application of it is, is, is the most significant part. So, there is the scenario-based, you know, school-based training where the cluster security supervisor comes in, sometimes with the director, to support and walk through the steps that you'll take in a scenario-based, you know, drill involving the onsite emergency team. You know, you, you play out the communications part. Everyone has an understanding of what their positions are. And you go through that process and then you, you debrief at the end about upgrades. So, it, that's, that's kind of the application of the professional learning that Doc, Mr. Montzleoni, I'm calling everyone doctor today. Mr. Montzleoni was, was referring to.
And you know what? I believe one summer, the board was invited to that summer training and it was at Walter Johnson. I remember that. So, I do appreciate what, what all has to happen to be prepared and trained. And I, I think you've mentioned, Dr. Moran, that, you know, being a principal is different and it's a little bit harder than it was post-pandemic. And I, I heard a story from Principal Andrew Winters at Ritchie Park Elementary School about having a bear in the community. So, you can't train for those type of incidents. But you all do endure and encounter a lot.
The training that you guys do, because we, we have a large number of acting or interim principals right now, do you do that training directly with them once they, they go to that school?
All of the principals receive, whether you're acting or a permanent principal, you would receive that training together. I think one of the critical things I want to just message is, you know, 211 schools, you can't just rely on one training for, and expect for them to remember. So, Dr. Moran and I send out reminders, right? You know, and we try to chunk it so that it's not so much at the same time. So, this process is new. So, we try to think about how do we really get principals to focus on, okay, we want you to do this for this month. We want you to think about, you know, how you meet with your OSAT team again next month to really make it more concrete for them and not be so overwhelming. Because sometimes they're getting a lot of communication and we want to make sure that this is really something easy, bite-sized that they can implement in their work most immediately. I want to go back to something about communication. And I just want to put my principal hat back on really quick. I think that it's important to know that we aim to communicate. So, I want our public to know that we aim to always communicate. In times where we don't communicate, it's really about the sensitivity of protecting the children, right? So, this idea that there might be police at a school because a kindergartner eloped, right? And so, you might see police presence, but it's really an opportunity for the director, the associate to confer with the principal to say, what was the impact? How many people saw this, right? To really protect the, and, you know, the privacy of the students. So, sometimes we have to take in consideration who or what happened. And there might not be communication about those specific events. But the, the, the message is, as much as we can, we will commu, communicate upfront about those, those incidences. So, I just wanted to circle back to that.
So, take that, the example. So, let's go with that. So, let's just say that exactly what you described happened. But for whatever reason, I'm a parent at that school and I heard about it. And then I'm sharing it and telling other people. Something happened, but the school didn't share it with us. How do you respond to that? Or do you? Like, how do you comfort people and let them know something happened, but there's privacy issues involved? Like, what do you all do in those incidents? Because I'm sure they happen. And then we'll keep going with the presentation.
So, I, great question. I think, so there are ways of, so I think we, we default so much to written communication in Montgomery County Public Schools. And so, when we even hear the word "communication," we're thinking email, you know, the Thursday things you should know. And so, we need to start understanding that you can communicate with people not in writing, right? There are ways to communicate with people, whether it's a large audience or it's a small audience, in a more informal way. And to, and also to, to increase access in terms of communication. Not everybody communicates through, you know, the written word and through an email. So, I, I think one of the things in that particular situation is utilizing your parent leaders in the community to be messengers for you. Because often people go to, you know, the PTA president, the Latino Parent Council, the NAACP representative to, to say, this is what I hear that's happening. And if they aren't empowered with the accurate information to say, that's correct, that did happen, or that's incorrect, like, we really need to make it a habit of our culture to start communicating and utilizing our partners in, in a more efficient way. And I think that is a trust piece to that, too, that, that, that demonstrates that how, that there's, that there's trust. And then community members also start to know who I can go to in certain situations to receive that information.
Really happy to hear the fact that you acknowledge that that is, that is a barrier, that we try to communicate through email and through the regular ways. And we have this expectation that all parents will get that information. And when parents say, I, I didn't know, I didn't know, oh, but we sent an email. But if we are ignorant about the fact that different communities get information differently and that we utilize our community partners, just besides PTAs, we have so many community partners in MCPS, from linkages to the wellness centers to other nonprofits that work after-school programs. And those partners have the ear and trust of a lot of these communities that usually do not get the communications through a standard email. I think it is so vital. And not only that, but I think it prevents innuendo and, and, and other things that can brew in a community without the right information. So, I like to kind of hear later on, like, what's your plan to enhance that? But also to communicate with the communicators. Board member Yang and I, we were, when the explosion happened at, in Gasesburg by the, by the elementary school. And, yeah, at Brown Station. And one of the things that I noticed and she noticed was that lack of communication with the diverse communities there. But it was also a lack of coordination. When I say communicated with the communicators, with the communicator from the fire department, the communicator from the police department, the communicator from county council, like, all these. It was very interesting to me, but none of them were communicating with each other. And, and therefore, I felt bad for the community because when they had this, this, this press conference, the parents, they were dying for information. And we had all these experts around. But the, the community was not getting the information that they needed because nobody was communicating, like, in Spanish and it was a mainly Latino community there. And I just want to know, you know, you were talking about communicating with the Montgomery County Police, with the PIO and so on. And just with the coordination. And how does that look like now? Because I know we learned from a lot of these incidents. You know, we have had, unfortunately, quite a few of them in the last five years in our county. And that has a direct impact on our children. So, how are we doing with that, with, with that piece?
So, we have the Public Information Officer from the police department here. And we're going to bring her up in a little bit. But with the police department, the fire department, the Office of Emergency Management, we got together within the last year and created a document that indicates how we should collaborate during times of crisis so that we're at least consistent in our messaging. It is absolutely fair to say, certainly with the police and the fire, they are some of the significant communicators in the community, especially in social media. They have lots of followers. So, it just stands to reason that we will coordinate. And Ms. Golf, who's with us today, I think she'll indicate that we call each other frequently. What's the truth? Here's what I know, here's what I need to share. And then we are able to course correct in that moment. And it's through relationships like that that we at least fix and work on that one aspect of what the community receives.
So, I'll just say real quickly, it helps us as board members to know what the exact plan is and who your partners are in communication. Because when parents respond to us, asking us what happened or what's going on because they're not aware, we can refer them back to their parent leaders that the principals are connecting them to. But then that also will charge us with thinking about the consistency across the county in making certain that principals are connecting with all of their parent leaders. And then what do you do in the instance where the school doesn't have a PTA? Or it's not very active or it's not functioning? Because then those connectors aren't actually there, right? So, I just challenge us to think about that and how we will be supportive. So, we'll take a couple more questions and we'll move forward. I know we have a lot more people that we want to hear from in our timeframe. Ms. Yang?
I have a de-appreciation of your work because every emergency is very different. And, and the incident, board member Rivera Evans mentioned that I can, I could clearly see how many people were working so hard at the scene, right? And actually, was amazed at the level of people and the, the diverse, different roles of people we could dispatch in such a short time, right? So, that was very impressive. But one takeaway I had is, by observing some of the emergency situation is that we communicate and handle it very much like we are an institution. And our communication on the side is, this, come across that way. I'm sure there's a reason for that. But however, as a parent or a community member, I wanted the communication to be more human-like. We are, and I, and I can be a little bit clear with that. What I mean, for incident, people typically like to have a face associated with it. Who can I talk to? Who is giving me the information I need to know? There's the fire, there's the police, there is other partners like nonprofits or county government. But is there someone who is the commander or the touch point of person that I can get information from, right? Whether this is the principal or associate or some spokesperson for this incident, that human face, it's important. And that's why the summary email is so helpful. Because the principal sent it out and people can, can attach that. They have a certain understanding and relationship with that person. So, I just want to challenge us to think about that. Because every emergency, things like a brown station, that is a very big deal for families. It's a very, you know, I cannot imagine, right, a, a situation that, something like Magruder, right? A face, how do we communicate as human beings, but not as an institution? I don't know how to do that. You are the professionals. So, so that, that will be something we can take a look at.
Can we talk next about what it looks like after the incident has occurred? Like, you know, the huddle that you get in and then, like, the, in some instances, the parent reunification? What is that?
Yes, so if we can go to the next slide. So, this is just an example of some of the post-incident review questions that, you know, our director-ass associate team, our safety and security team gets together to, again, think about what went well, what upgrades can we make to ensure that we follow appropriate protocols and everybody was safe, right? So, again, this go, this corresponds to step number seven. And again, this is, this happens after we've cleared the incident. Everybody's, you know, safe. And so, that's the beginning step. Next slide. We've got parent-child reunification. Anybody want to add on here? So, this is an opportunity for us to really think about the process that it takes in an emergency to get students back with their caregivers, right? I think that it's important to recognize that not all schools are going to look the same in terms of that, that parent-child reunification just because of, you know, how the school is constructed, streets and locations that are nearby that the school may use in terms of where they send students during that emergency. The beginning of each year, each school does submit their emergency plan that includes where they would have their parent-child reunification. As the director who supported Brown Station, we had to get all 600 students across that field. And we had to organize how we were going to get kids back with their parents. So, it is an ordeal. And it looks different. Again, I just want to reiterate because I know that we've received some feedback about, you know, the, I'm just thinking about Springbrook. We had an evacuation there. And so, we had to go back to the drawing board and say, we can't evacuate like that again. So, I think to your earlier point around, we are always thinking about what we need to do differently to ensure that we are not putting our kids at risk during an evacuation. So, we're, again, working with our MCPD, safety and security to make sure that after each event, there's opportunities for upgrades to how we evacuate or respond to a shelter or any crisis or serious incident.
And sometimes we're making adjustments in real time. During the Brown Station incident, you might remember as those students walked across that field to the community center, which I believe was next door, we got on the phone and called all the news stations, said, please move your helicopters away. That was creating a safety measure and for those students and anxiety for our families. Now, I know that is something to be covered. I know that that is a news element. But that doesn't mean we're not going to make the phone call, right, for our students.
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to add, you may want to go to the next slide just as, as an example. So, this is just an example of what a layout would look like from school X, right? But to Mr. Adams' point, not only do the schools submit their reunification plan, right? This is something, every single school has a, what are called an OSAT, an annual OSAT meeting in the summer that is attended. It's a collaborative effort with school administration, with the supervisor of the schools and the security office, right? And the cluster security coordinator and the entire security team are present and they review all of these things. And they plan out the drills for the entire year, okay? And one of the first drills that you are to do as a principal is your reunification drill, right? So, it is going to look a little bit different. But that is just what that looks like there at, at the school level. And just to ensure that, just one of y'all know there is that level of collaboration. There's oversight from the, the safety and security folks as well.
May I ask you a quick question? Do you find that after principals have put together their reunification plan that something happens to happen at the school, that they make some adjustments and they call and tell you, okay, so this didn't quite work like how, how we thought, right? And so, here are some adjustments that we need to make? So, that does happen? Okay. Well, I can't wait for Principal Deanie to come down here. I know she's in the audience.
I have a quick question before, before we go there with reunification. When you have a large group of the, of the children, like a brown station where you had, I don't know, it was about 70-plus percent of the kids were Spanish-speaking with the parents. Is, do you guys in central office or community? Is, do you guys in Central Office or Community, do you guys have an emergency communication team to deploy with language access? Because even though they have, even though the principal at that time, she was fluent, which was very helpful, and some other folks in the, in the school, we do have many schools that have a large representation and where Spanish is the majority of parents. So do you guys have like an emergency team? Because you have, like you said, you have emergencies, the explosion, explosion in Silver Spring, the explosion again in Silver Spring. But you have, you have, you know, what happened in Maguera High School and others. So you have emergencies and you have emergencies. But when you have a major emergency where you know you're going to have to communicate with a large number of parents, do you guys have a team deployed that is trained and ready to like go maybe from different schools or different parent community coordinators? I don't know. Just throwing it out there.
So I'll let my colleagues help to fill out that question. But one thing I do want to point out, Ms., our Director in Security, Michelle Esafur Andrews, who couldn't make it here today, was going to talk about Incident Command. It's during Incident Command that those types of resources are, and the need for them, are identified and deployed.
Yeah, absolutely. So I think, again, if we could, if you wanted to hear about the response, and I know that the star, the guest star here, Ms. Dini is from the Richard Montgomery High School, is about to come up here. I don't know, but we can go to the next slide and talk a little bit about, and I'll just do a quick sketch of what that Incident Command looks like, right? So whenever there is, so whenever there's an incident, there's a live communication thread that all the executive staff have 24 hours a day, right? So we are monitoring this and we are seeing what's happening in real time. And then based on the assessment of the level of what it may be, there is an Incident Command team that is called. The Security Office and Director of Security is in charge of coordinating that and calling that, right? So you're going to have folks on this team from across the district. And you're certainly going to have the school supervisory folks, you're going to have the building administration, you're going to have communication, you may have transportation, you may have facilities management, right? You are certainly going to have folks from my team, the Crisis Response Team, Dr. Connolly Chester and Ms. Kelly Gruet, the psychologist, the assessments. You may have the supervisor of the Social Worker Unit as well, Stephanie Wallace. It just depends on what is happening. We all are on this call. And then we run through literally, what do we know? What do we need to know? Who is going to do what? There is a detailed report and a summary that is written and issued right after that. And there are written follow-ups along the way. And if there is a, and often there may be a second Incident Command that is called, right? So we've responded, this is ongoing, we're going to come back to assess and what else may be needed. But that is that structure. And so just to walk through like the social, emotional and the mental health supports, just to let you know. So MCPS uses what's called the Prepare Model in alignment with FEMA, the U.S. Department of Education, National Incident Management System. And it essentially just is about how do we prevent, protect, mitigate, respond, right, to all of these pieces? And so just for the folks in my office, you know, we are, we are in touch and we triage with the principal, right? So once we have identified, we have, and I'll walk you through an example. You could have a medical emergency of a staff member in a classroom. So who's impacted by that? Probably those students, right? And the families, elementary. So we might focus our social, emotional supports just on those students, right? If for some reason we have, you know, the tragedy of a student maybe taking their own life or something to that effect, then we are going to identify with the school leadership and the counseling team and the trusted adults in the building. Who are the students that were closest to the student that passed? Who is affected by this? How are we going to work with them? How are we going to communicate with their parents? And we are, we are going to, our mental health professionals, they are experts in this and they will decide, are we doing group? Are we doing individual? Does the student have outside therapy? I mean, so it's really a comprehensive approach in that. And so they triage. The one thing that we have really calibrated, and I think it's really important, it goes back to what Dr. Moran was saying about centering the principal's autonomy in this, is there was a period there, I'd say in probably '21, where we just descended on a school. And, you know, there's this law in economics of diminishing returns, right? So if you put too many people into a space, you're not going to be effective. So that is where that triage with the principal occurs. And that often does happen between Ms. Kelly Gruet, Connolly Chester and the principals and the school psychologists, the social worker that's on site, so on and so forth. I don't know if we wanted to go to the next, yeah, please.
Just a follow-up to that. But my question was, I know you said you have a command team, right? So now I'll ask you, in your command team, how many of those are bilingual, one? And two, do you though have a group, an emergency group of bilingual staff that you deploy to a school who's having a major emergency? Like who are trained, who know how to manage a scene, who know reunification? Because like you said, the principal is dealing with the emergency, with the safety, with the mental health support of the staff and so on. So I'm just, I just wanted to know if that exists.
Let me, let me clarify one thing, and then I think that to the point of your question about communication and bilingual, and I would pass that back to Mr. Cram. But what I'm speaking to here does not happen in the heat of the moment, right? While that incident is happening, right? That incident needs to be resolved. We need to make sure that everybody is safe and it's afterward, right? So I'll just kind of touch upon my part. Even before any incident occurs, for example, I think about 35% of our social worker unit is Spanish-speaking. And we have purposely allocated them to schools and clusters that have high Spanish-speaking populations as an example of this. So we will automatically ensure that any student that is receiving support is receiving that support in their language.
They're fabulous, by the way, because I know quite a few of them. I was talking mainly before that, like when, when the, when the crisis is going on at that moment, that's, that's what I was talking about.
So there may be an area for an upgrade here. So is there an identified team ready to go? We certainly have the people willing and able to do these things. We have interpreters in our own LASSU unit. In the initial time of a serious incident, we very much rely on the principal's knowledge of other language needs in that community. And they often already have identified members of their OSEP team, their On-Site Emergency Team, they're helping with that immediate communication. And then as Mr. Milan Tillyoni was saying, later on, when we're doing the follow-up work, we can call on many more assets to make sure that in a culturally responsive and other-language way, we're making the connections that we need to.
And I appreciate, I appreciate, sorry, I appreciate the answer, but I guess we don't, is the answer. And I guess my suggestion would be that we look at it so that way we can, because it's not just with the Spanish community, but you could have a large Asian community, you can have a community who speaks French, you can have a community in the Silver Spring area, they speak American. I mean, there's, so I guess because we are who we are, our identity as one of the most diverse school systems in the country, and there's nothing worse than an emergency as a parent and not being in the clear of whether your child is safe or not. I think everyone who's a parent here can identify with that gut feeling. And I'm, like, like my colleagues have kids, you know, who graduated from MCPS and had very serious incidents in our schools. There's nothing worse than not being able to know if your child is okay. And then you add a component of a language access issue, and it's, it's, it's just agonizing. So what I'm saying is, and I appreciate the fact that, you know, but the principals are dealing with what they're dealing with, that emergency, which they should, their eyes should be in that moment, their community, they're not thinking about, oh, let me call identity or my community partner. So what I'm saying is that we, you know, and you know what? The principal could be sick that day, right? Because we don't know when an emergency is going to happen. We have, we have no way to predict when an emergency is going to happen. So, you know, the principal could have been, she could have been at Brown Station, she could have been out for that day with a cold. And so, so what I'm saying is, I just want us to get ahead of it. God forbid that we ever have to face a situation, but we cannot foresee, there could be weather, there could be, I don't know, things are going crazy these days. We have one day 90 degrees and the other day we have snow. So, but all I'm saying is that I just would like us to look back a little bit and just be able to think of those who truly need to also be, you know, communicated with and to support the principals or whoever are in these schools. Because you could have a school with 400 students, or you could have a high school like Seneca Valley with like 4,000 students, right? So those are two different things. So to have a team that is trained, like you said, you have amazing training, that you have amazing workers, you have amazing community parents coordinators, but to have like a team, like ready to go, I know Montgomery County Government has one. I know Mr. Campbell used to be in charge of it, right? That he has components around, and there's community members also who have been trained and ready to go to answer to, to an emergency. I just think for us would be a good thing to internalize and to implement. That's all.
I have a quick question and maybe a suggestion. I think within MCPS, our supporting staff is the most diverse workforce that mirror our community. I'm wondering, when schools are developing these kind of unification plan, is it our practice to identify staff members with language abilities and in a time of emergency that they can play a role in the reunification process? Because I have been to several emergencies that, that there are families that, that are waiting there, but they, they're not able to communicate because their language is a smaller language. You know, I understand there's no way we can dispatch every language out there, but maybe there are staff members there that have some skill set that we can tap into.
Yang is probably onto something, because at Brown Station, that's a two-way immersion school, right? So I'm sure we had a school full of staff that could help, but Dr. Moran, if you can...
Yes, no, I was just going to say absolutely. I think one of the great opportunities for the development of an, of an OSEP team is that you're not, you're not looking at people by their titles or position. You're looking at them by the skills that they hold. So my operations lead was always my Building Service Manager. So it was an opportunity to elevate people and give them leadership opportunities based on their skill levels, based off of, you know, languages that they, that they may, that they may speak. So when you look at the OSEP teams across our schools, you'll notice that there are many SEIU members that are taking the lead on that, on that work because of their specific skill sets.
And I know we wanted to bring Michelle down. She's here. But I know that we still have to go through a few more slides.
I don't want to run out of time, but yeah.
Yes, yes, we have like 45 minutes left. I know we can go a little over, but I want to be respectful of people's time because we did start, start school late. But I just wanted to, I wanted to do a time check and let you know she's here.
If we could bring Michelle down real quick?
Good morning, I'm sorry, it's triple booked.
No apologies necessary.
Probably dealing with something serious.
Yes.
Yeah, something like that.
Turn your light on. We have 211 schools, so we totally understand that sometimes we have to do other things. Turn your light on and introduce yourself to everyone. Let them know.
Hi, good morning, everyone. My name is Michelle Esafur Andrews. I'm Director of School Safety and Security, and I've been on board since November and loving it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad to have you.
Thank you.
If my colleagues had any questions for, okay, so if not, then can we, I don't know...
Yeah, I just want to prompt her for one response. She's done a wonderful job, standing up very quickly, something that we know works extremely well during crisis, which is Incident Command. Could you just briefly describe what goes into that, so our audience and our board members understand?
Sure. So with Incident Command, there's two components. One, the activation of it at the school level with that incident, and then the activation in our office at Central Office. So typically, we find out about school-related incidents in various ways. As a serious incident that may come from OSSWB, they're really great with not only sending the emails, but we have our, our internal text thread. They may get something first, I may get something first. We're on the phone like 24/7. So we started off that way, and the Incident Command is automatically activated based on the assessment of the threat level. So if it's something that comes in, heaven forbid, like a bomb threat, it will, it can come from one of the supervisors calling me first, or our coordinator calling our supervisor, who calls me first, and we do a quick huddle, maybe it's like maybe 20 seconds, and it's a quick assessment of, is this credible? Who do we need to pull in quickly, et cetera? And so from there, and for the actual event, we activate ICS and we pull our, our key internal partners and members of our OSSWB team. We can at times pull in other departments like Kelly Gruet, Dr. Connolly Chester, et cetera. So we all come together, typically we'll come together in our, in my office here, pull up our cameras, and we're moderating communication from our office and from the location where the event is taking place. Typically from my office, we deploy an individual, it could be a cluster security coordinator, it can be one of our rovers, also known as specialist. And at times, depending on the severity of the incident, I'll deploy our supervisor as well. Internally, one of the things that we are consistently doing as well is having ongoing communication with our police partners. They too, depending on the incident, if they find out about it first, they will give me a call, which I will relay the information quickly to OSSWB and the school contacting the principal or whomever else it needs to know. OSSWB has their protocols too in terms of notifying the school. But we communicate typically to make sure we cross all our Ts and dot all our Is, saying, hey, did you contact so-and-so? And if they're tied up, we'll kind of bounce off of each other to make sure that the communication is sufficient. So we go through the whole process internally with ICS and ensuring that the incident is covered in all capacities and we're engaging the appropriate individuals. And at the end of the incident, again, depending on the severity of it, we'll either A, do a debrief just as a lessons learned, or B, do a debrief to see what continuing support that the school may need based on the incident. A lot of times with the severity of the incident, we need more ongoing support established from Dr. Connolly Chester's office, et cetera. And depending on the incident, there may be other resources that need to be deployed, such as food and nutrition, transportation, et cetera. So we do do a debrief after. Again, depending on the severity, we typically try to do the debrief the same day or the following morning. And with the debrief comes ongoing conversations afterwards, depending on the incident, where we will follow up with the school administrators, just to make sure that they have the appropriate support in place to get them back to normalcy, because that's the goal, is the resiliency piece. You know, when incidents happen, how do we get back to the norm and making sure that everything is sufficient and running smoothly for our students and our staff.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Said?
I honestly just want to thank you for, for the work that you do. You came in, I think, at a time that was really, really hectic, and I have seen you've taken on that role, you know, fully. And I know the huge amount of work that goes into it, and I just want to say thank you for all the work that you do and being so excited to do that work. And, you know, clearly, based on what you've just told us, you have this process, you know, down, you know exactly, you know, what's going on, what the process looks like. And, you know, I just want to thank you for all your hard work. I really have nothing else to say other than that.
The members yesterday, it sounds like you've been here for years, so.
It feels like it. Appreciate it. It does. But I'm grateful, I believe I have great support. And the one thing that I think has made the job a lot more sufficient for me is, again, the support and the partnerships is key. I really like working with this team, especially because it doesn't feel like an isolated incident that I'm dealing with myself. We definitely have a community-based approach and definitely looking to, to get better. And I believe we are the greatest school system and, and we will, you know, address all gaps, especially in this area, to make things better, so.
I concur.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, I just have a comment. I know that this is the Communication Committee, so today we are talking a lot about crisis communication. But I do want to commend the system that our primary focus is handle the emergency, handle the crisis, the safety of our students and staff on campus at that moment. So that is always the top priority. We are just, we are talking today about, so much about communication, not to take away that our primary focus is to making sure that our students and staff are okay.
Absolutely. Okay. Well, thank you, and you can, you can continue on with the presentation, or if you, if we're done with this portion and we want to introduce the next set.
Yeah.
That's fine, too. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
So with the comments from Michelle Esafur Andrews, I did want to introduce you to one of our key community communicators from the Police Department. Ms. Goff is here. She's the Public Information Officer with the Police Department. I'm not sure if Mr. Peringer arrived. We also had invited the Public Information Officer from the Fire Department. So just very quickly, I'd like you to meet her and hear from her and how she does her work and how we collaborate, and then we'll get to the part you really want. her work and how we collaborate, and then we'll get to the part you really want, which is our school stories.
No, this is great. We wanted to include everyone in the conversation because we know they're so important to all the work that's being done, and we knew that it was a short period of time that we were jamming everything in, but we just really thought it was important to bring everybody to the table. So welcome. Thank you.
So if you would just introduce yourself and tell us about your work.
Hi, my name is Shara Goff. I am the director of media and public information for the Montgomery County Department of Police. I've been with MCPD, uh, since May of 2021, and Chris and I have, um, established what I believe is a very positive and strong working relationship. Whenever there is a critical incident that happens within a Montgomery County school or nearby, um, I will reach out to Chris and let him know what's going on. Sometimes Chris will have the information before me, and Chris will reach out to me directly. Following an incident that happened at Bethesda Chevy Chase, uh, we had a meeting where Chris and I agreed that it would be best if we had a joint crisis communications plan, and we worked on that together. Uh, we also incorporated fire rescue and OEMS in that as well. And, um, we, you know, as I was listening to you all talk, uh, you know, we also have the same practice where we will release information on Twitter only every 20 minutes to let them know, let the public know, and especially the media, because the media knows to follow us on Twitter for critical incidents. So we will release information every 20 minutes. And, um, you know, I, I think that works pretty well. Chris and I will talk with one another beforehand. Uh, there are some times where there are moving parts where, um, you know, we're moving quickly and Chris and I are not able to communicate, but we will, um, at some point, we will brief either during or after the initial message goes out.
And so one of the things that Ms. Goff has done is set a very high level of expectation through that Twitter account of connection with the community. It's become vital for the connection between the police department and the community knowing what's going on. It only makes sense that we partner in that. And in her role supporting the police, there are, of course, things that she needs to talk about revolving around criminal response, right? That is just not in my wheelhouse. We're speaking for the schools and their response, but with both of us out there with this promise to do it as frequently as possible, then I think the community is being well-served and we continue to improve along the way. And Mr. Peringer, who is also, um, a very prolific communicator in social media, is in full agreement with this. Yes, we all follow Mr. Peringer. And, um, you can't help but say, I know what the police department is doing during that significant incident. He is very good at that. And so I'm very thankful for this partnership, and I think it supports all of the units. I appreciate you being here today.
Thank you. I do want to address, uh, something that you had mentioned earlier about the explosion at the condominium in Gaithersburg. Uh, you know, perception is reality. Fire, police, we were all working together for four or five days straight, um, and so there was communication between fire and police. Anything school-related, um, Chris was handling. We were handling the criminal side of this investigation. We also do have a Spanish-speaking public information officer, so whenever we did our news conferences, our Spanish-speaking public information officer would address the media afterwards in Spanish.
And I, and I appreciate that, and I was there every day. Unfortunately, I think your, your Spanish-speaking officer was not, um, was not working that day of the explosion, and neither was Oscar from the fire department. So it created a situation when we had the two major press conferences where none of it was in Spanish. So that's what I'm saying, you know, you can have a principal who is fully bilingual, but if that principal is not there that day, like, who do you go to? So for me, it's always having a plan B to be able, you know, to, um, to communicate to the large community, because that was, you know, especially at the beginning of that crisis, is the most important time to be able to communicate with them, so. But, but thank you, I, I know Carl's very well, and he was an intern of mine many moons ago, uh, when Blanca Kling was there and, um, may she rest in peace, she was an amazing communicator as well for the police department, but.
Have you had a chance to meet our Latina liaison yet?
Yes, Ms. Leon, yes, absolutely. She's a, she's a, she's a wonderful human being. Yes, thank you.
Wonderful.
Well, thank you, Ms. Goff. So at this time, if we could bring forward our school representatives, Ms. Dean from Richard, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Did we jump ahead?
Yeah, I think, I just wanted to make a couple last comments and quick questions. So I know that you, you know, you do the work, um, you know, with the police department, and I know that they release those critical incident reports, and those are very, very, those get spread a lot around social media, and I know social media is kind of my thing, being a student member of the board, and students use that. And so the biggest thing I see is that I didn't know that this collaboration existed, and I think what the community sentiment is now is when they see the police reporting on something, they see the Moco Show reporting and not MCPS, they're saying, wow, everyone is reporting to us except MCPS, and this is from the social media lens alone, because that's, students are not checking their emails, that's the bottom line. So what I'm thinking is, maybe we should try and work towards a, a, a way to ensure that MCPS alongside the, the police department has its own method of communication that is as widespread, so that people don't feel like they have to go to other sources outside the school system to get news about the school system. I think that's just a perception a lot of students have and a lot of parents have right now.
So I think that's a very wise observation, because it is absolutely true that we use our social spaces at the beginning of serious incidents, certainly big crises, and the school-level, um, social media is often utilized there, but we currently don't do the follow-up actions other than directly with the communities affected, in our broad social media, I mean. And you're saying that the police do and the Moco Show does?
They, I think what they do better is the actual communication about an incident. Like, for example, when I find out about an incident from social media, every single time I see the police department's post on it and the Moco Show, because I know the Moco Show intercepts police communication, they listen to the actual broadcast and everything like that, but I, we don't have a strong outlet. And what I'm saying is, I would maybe try and, and urge the communications team to build up their social media status so people can get the information directly from MCPS, so that sentiment of our own school system isn't informing us, random media companies, and the police are, doesn't really exist, because that does right now, because people don't know about that partnership that you guys have.
So thank you for that, and I suspect.
Oh, I think you, I think your microphone is off.
My mic.
So I thank you for that, and I suspect Celia has taken a note to say, Chris, what can we do about that?
Yeah, and, and I think my recommendation in general would be to include a, you have that plan for how to communicate with the community. I would say create a plan on how you communicate on social media, and I would say create a very clear plan for each type of incident, for a lockdown incident, for a shelter, what is your message, what platforms are you getting it out on, how quickly, and I think that'll be a lot more effective, because genuinely, 90% of students are looking only at social media, and that's all they see. And we're working to build the Remind app, but it's not fully in place yet, so in, in that time, we need to utilize social media, because the, the hundreds of texts I get during an incident, um, and, and I have no idea more than the average person what's going on, and the, the thousands of comments and reposts I see from students all in this panic when an incident happens, because we don't have that social, we, we're not in social media, so we're letting the Moco Show and we're letting other people control the narrative. I think it's something that, that gets things out of hands, get things out of hand a lot more than it has to. So if we have a social media plan, we utilize that, I think it'll allow us to ensure that accurate information and timely information is coming from us rather than other sources. So that, that's what I would just suggest, uh, as part of this plan.
Well, I ask that you invite us back, so we can talk about where we've improved in that area.
Yeah, so I, I, I want to push back a little bit on Mr. Said's comment. In terms of social media, I know that's where students get their information, but for me, uh, we, we have to really think about what is our purpose of, uh, of using our social media? Do I, as a school system parent or community member now, don't have children in a school? Do I want to hear about every serious incident that happened in our school on social media? I, that might not be how I want, uh, the information be fed to me. So I, I'm not quite sure about that one. I understand maybe the student community has a need, but for me, as a community member, I, 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 I wonder, is that the, uh, the, what I want to get out of our MCPS social media?
So we don't have to solve it and figure it out right here, right now, but it can be a discussion to, um, figure out how we can best meet the needs of all of our viewers and community members, so, but it's something that we can, um, table for right now, and then, um, talk a little bit more off to the side, and then, as Mr. Cram noted, we can come back at another time and share with the community what the end results are, or what else we need to have them know and to be informed about. So, um, I'm doing a time check, it's 11:35, and Principal Dini is here. I want to hear from her, and, um, I wanted to.
And I'd also.
But please respond, yes.
No, no, I just, I'd also like to invite Doctors Archin down, who's going to share.
Yes, Doctor Archin, that's right. I saw him earlier when I was coming in. He opened the door for me. Thank you so much.
Always the gentleman.
Yes, yes.
So, thank you for your patience.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you for having me.
Absolutely.
But as, as you've heard a number of times, it's those school connections that everybody wants to hear about, and both Doctors Archin and Principal Dini have stories that they would like to tell you, how they responded, the challenges, the best practices, and I'll just leave it there and we'll go from there.
Yes, yes.
So thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this morning, uh, about the school story, in particular, Richard Montgomery High School, but I think we all know that my school is maybe special, in my opinion. However, um, it is a school that has situations that represent the types of situations that many of our schools are dealing with. Um, and in hearing the conversation this morning, although I prepared, um, my specific thoughts and reflections on how we responded to school incidents, I think the big theme that is emerging in our conversations is the complexity of responding to these incidents, and I'm going to talk specifically through the lens of looking at our communications associated with these. However, I think it's really important to remember that the principal is the incident commander of these situations, as well as a human.
Yes.
Um, who cares for their community and is impacted as well in these situations. And then, we must overcome whatever emotions we have to have thoughtful communications about what we say, knowing that we are the ones who are being looked to for the answers of how we responded, what happened, how are we going to care for the community, how are we going to heal? So I want to share with you just one specific example that Mr. Cram, uh, said, you know, this would be a good example. Um, and one specific week was a very difficult week. Mr. Said, you're a member of our school, so you know this week, um, there was a week in mid-November, right before Thanksgiving, a very difficult week. At Richard Montgomery High School, we had three serious incidents that we had to communicate to the community. The first one involved students reporting that another student had bullets and a knife, um, and the student in question was searched by the police, nothing was found on the student, so that was the initial situation that we had to communicate. The second, um, which was really the one that caused the most concern, involved a student from whom we confiscated a loaded handgun. Uh, and then, unfortunately, within a day of that situation, a day or two, we had a third communication that we had to make, uh, related to a student of ours who had been shot outside of the Rockville community, um, and he was being hospitalized for, for that gunshot wound. Thankfully, I want to share, the student has recovered and he's back in school, but this was six days of concerning situations at our school, all related to safety and security. Um, so the one that really, I think, caused the deepest concern was the confiscation of the loaded handgun, um, and an initial letter notifying the community was sent out, um, and then follow-up messages explaining why we didn't go into a lockdown and shelter. Uh, this was something that was closely coordinated with the Rockville City Police, but it also involved Montgomery County Police, so there was complexities in the response to that, um, that had to do with police investigation. Um, and, um, and then, in, you know, in the immediate response to the incident, we were coordinating with Rockville City Police, um, and, uh, and system-wide safety and security was amazing. They were there immediately, um, supporting our school. Um, and as I shared, so in this situation, um, I am both the incident commander, and obviously I'm delegating to my members of my OSAT team what their different responses are going to be, um, but every situation is going to be different and has different levels of complexity. Um, and when there is a police investigation involved, this adds another layer of complexity in how we communicate, which makes it very difficult, because you want to tell everybody everything, um, but the police has limitations, um, if it's something in an investigation that you don't want to impede, uh, that investigation or, or cause something to interfere with, uh, dealing with a potential threat or a concern. Um, so the, you know, the situation occurred, thankfully, the confiscation, you know, was completed, it was, it was done, but obviously that's going to cause a huge amount of fear and alarm that a student had a loaded handgun in our school. Uh, so, um, there was the initial communication with the community. I held a staff meeting, excuse me, right after school, um, then, that was on a Friday afternoon. The following week, I met with our student leadership, which is a group of about 30 students, to just have a sense of, and a conversation with our students about any questions that they might have. Um, and then finally, I felt that a community meeting was necessary so that our community could fully engage in a full conversation about the incident, and that occurred right after Thanksgiving break. Um, and, so, I mean, the timing of it wasn't the greatest, we would have had a community meeting sooner, but we had Thanksgiving in there. Um, so for our community meeting, um, what I did was send out a form so that I could pre-gather questions from the community and really develop what our presentation was going to be, to kind of preemptively address any concerns or questions that we could have and tailor that presentation to the concerns in the community. I also think it's very important in these, uh, in these incidents to bring all the community stakeholders together and to have a panel of community members that are the ones responding to the questions, because these, these situations that we're dealing with are community situations. As you said, Ms. Rivera, even like the, all of our community members are concerned about it. It's the whole city of Rockville that cares that there's a concern in the city of Rockville, not just RM, about the safety of our students. Um, so the, the panel that I created to respond to parent questions was comprised of the Rockville City Police Department with the chief, deputy chief, lieutenant, as well as our community engagement officer, Corporal Tibbs, uh, who was present that, the day of that situation, also my director, Tam Campbell, um, Allison Baber from Systemwide Safety and Security, and then also on the panel was a parent who is the chair of a parent group that we started at RM a little over a year ago. It's a parent safety and security committee that I regularly meet with, uh, where we are having constant communications, uh, about what our school is doing related to safety and security. I also invited the mayor of Rockville, the city council, all attended, um, our PTSA, obviously, um, and was in, I was in constant communication with our PTSA president about this situation. Um, and then our student SGA was also present, and Mr. Said also attended the meeting. Um, and the meeting really started with an overview of really the security that's in place at RM, because that is a big question that people have when an incident occurs. We are working on safety and security 24/7 at Richard Montgomery High School, but parents don't usually understand what's in place until they have a question about what's in place. And you can have your safety and security meeting every year that you give the overview to parents, but many community members don't really think about it until we have a situation. Um, and then, really, I was able to give an overview and a timeline of the incident. Now, I did have to work with the Rockville City Police to go through what those key pieces were that I could share, um, so that none of that information would interfere with their investigation or interfere with any potential court proceedings associated with that. Um, most of the questions in my meeting were directed at the police department, um, the difficult questions about why did you do this, or why wasn't this done, and why didn't we have a lockdown, why didn't we have a shelter? Those were questions that it was very helpful to have the police directly there to be able to respond, um, to the community, since really they were our, our partners in that situation. Then, um, we were able to open things up to questions so that community members could ask questions, share concerns, um, and share, really, a lot of them shared their concerns about additional needs, uh, for our community. The topic of metal detectors was one that was brought up again, um, and it was just really powerful to have all of the stakeholders present. Um, the meeting was also recorded, um, the video was sent out to the community, to staff, students, and parents, and I'll add, uh, that when we communicate, we also send messages to our students via Canvas. So whatever we send to parents via connected, we send to students via Canvas. Um, and so all of these messages are parallel communications with students. The SGA, um, also, to speak to what you're sharing, uh, about social media, the SGA also created an Instagram post following the meeting to kind of summarize the key points for students, uh, about the meeting, which included a link to the, um, to the video if any students wanted to watch the video of the presentation. Um, so in addition, all of these communications associated with this incident, our parent safety and security committee, it continues to meet as a group. They're kept updated about all of our efforts at RM related to safety and security, and this core group of parents is important, because they're our experts on what our efforts are related to this area, um, of our school, and they can be additional voices in our community, um, to speak up, to say, no, I, I know that, you know, they are working on X, Y, and Z. that, you know, they are working on X, Y, and Z at our school. It's also important to note that when these incidents occur, these incidents are all-consuming for the principal. There is nothing, I mean, I try to do other things. Most importantly, I try to focus on the wonderful things that our students are doing. I try to make it a point to get out and see good things that are happening in the school, because I don't, I think it is concerning, as well, as we're talking about communications, that this become the main thing that is happening at a school. This is one thing that's really, really scary and can overshadow what's happening at a school. But every week, there are thousands of beautiful things happening at our school. So, my weekly messages, actually, starting in the new year, I've really, and I've always thought it important to celebrate our students and to celebrate the good things, but this, my weekly message now includes like, what are the, all the good things that happened this week, in addition to what's coming up? I'm really trying to incorporate that into our school narrative. I've always done that, but I feel that in times of crisis, it's even more important that we remember that. So, in conclusion, you know, this particular week in November, it just exemplifies the layers and facets of communication. I appreciate you taking the time to hear all that's involved in responding to these incidents in our communities, and I appreciate the board's understanding and our community's understanding of the complexity of these incidents. Principals, we are human, these situations affect us as well, but our really focus is on bringing the community together for a period of restabilization and healing following these situations. And via, you know, whether it's written communication, verbal communication, conversations, ultimately, I believe it's the conversations and understanding that heal following a serious incident. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I really appreciate you coming, and I love how you started off by saying that, you know, you're the commander in chief in terms of when serious incidents happen, but also, you're human, and I want people to hear that and know that, that this is a lot for our principals to go through, but you do use your head in that moment to get through it. And I will just share with our community that for very serious incidents, board members get all of those community letters that our principals send out to the community. And I will say, yours really resonated with me for a variety of reasons, and that's why I chose you to come here to talk about your situation. But it was a lot to do with the parents that I know that have kids in your school that did not even know that there was a gun in the building. Their students were unaware, and I just thought how smoothly that happened, right? For whatever reason, it happened that way, that I thought it meant a lot to know that the school day continued to go on for the majority of the kids in the school that were unaware of what was happening. And so, you mentioned having a parent advisory group around safety and security, and then you also mentioned the piece around sending out a message to the students in Canvas. And as I was listening to everyone talk earlier, Mr. Adams, Dr. Moran, I was thinking about, I know how sensitive the serious incidents are, but I was thinking about what is a way for us to get a message to the students, to kind of keep them calm, because they are the ones that we hear from and see on Twitter? But if they had a message that they could receive that could help them to know that everything was working smoothly, or just knowing that you had everything under command or under control, that that would be helpful. So, I was, I do appreciate hearing that from you, that you do do that, and I'm sure other people do that at other schools. So, my question to you is this, I know that, I'm going to ask you this question, I've heard from parents around other serious incidents in schools. So, if there's a serious incident in the school that doesn't really require for students to be reunited with their parents, what is the process like in the event that a parent is made, they hear about what's going on, you're not trying to release students, but a parent wants to come and get their student? What does that look like? How is that for parents, and is there a procedure in place where if you get a call from a parent saying, I want to come and get my kid, I don't care what's going on, I can't wait until you, you get it under control, or you can provide even more news? What does that look like, and can you do that?
Yeah, so, I think it's really important, I always have to remember the main office staff first in my communications, and I, they're an amazing team at Richard Montgomery, but when something is happening, I really need to give them the heads up, right? Because they are going to be that front line to receiving phone calls or receiving a parent when they're arriving at school if they want to pick up their child. Obviously, in a lockdown, we would be in a lockdown, and the parent would be prevented from coming into the building. But if a parent has a fear and they want to come and pick up their child when we're in the middle of some sort of incident, or if I, you know, made an announcement that, like in this case, I know that I had at least one parent who said, you know what, I want to come and pick up my child, because they don't feel good about being in school for the rest of the day, and of course, we're going to work with that parent to, you know, get their child and, you know, they can go home, we'll give them as much information as we can to, you know, to make them feel that we're going to support them and their child and whatever they need. I think that the follow-up communications can be really helpful to that parent later for them to really know. So, there's, there are lots of layers of follow-up, right? There's the initial, this happened, but then, I'm going to also share this with you now that I can, and then I'll share this with you, and then we'll go deeper with a community meeting. So, what I have found with, I could think of one parent in particular who had that concern on this particular day, there, I don't know that they felt better that it happened or didn't happen, but they weren't any longer, their child is coming back to school, right? Like, so, so enough was done to communicate with that parent to help them, but I, you know, as a principal, have had a number of incidents, you know, the power going out and not coming on, right? And parents wanting to pick up their child, where we just have to prepare our main office staff to work and receive parents, and they will. Yeah.
Let me ask a question to Mr. Cram, Ms. Fisher. With the templates that you showed in the other slides, that we already have some stuff ready to go, are we making it real clear, based on what the incident is, that students cannot be picked up, but we will let you know? Like, is there a way for us to alert parents when it's an incident where we don't want you to come to the school, just so that they could know?
Yeah, there's definitely, and all of those templates, by the way, which are, have been created, knowing what we typically deal with, maybe a bomb threat, or police activity, or a threat of a weapon, et cetera. In most of those, there are lines about, do not come to the school right now, we have to, I forget how it's worded, but allow the police and the onsite emergency folks to do the job.
Okay, just to make sure.
Yep.
Do my colleagues have a Mr. Said question?
Yeah, I first want to associate myself with your, you know, comments earlier, Ms. Dini, or as I know you, Principal Dini. I mean, I really think that the work you do around communication is genuinely a framework of what everyone should do. I've, I remember that week very, very well, and I remember all the communication, like you said, I was at the follow-up meeting, and I cannot applaud you enough for how well you communicate with every stakeholder, and specifically, the way that you communicate with the focus on who you're talking to. You come to the student leadership class, you send students all the emails that, like you said, you send to parents, and I can't express how much I appreciate that, I literally can't say in words how much it means to students, that you don't just, you know, send things out to other people, the students, you know, whatever, but you intentionally make it a point to talk to students. I mean, that's huge. And, you know, I want to agree with what you said about Ms. Dini's messaging during these incidents. It is very personable, to your point as well, about being human, very personable, and it has an impact when people see you, you know, as a person, like you said, who's trying to deal with this, and you just do a fantastic job at that. That community meeting had a great turnout, the panel was expertly done, and since you worked with police, you let police answer the questions about the protocol, and I think that parents in the community really appreciated that. You were transparent, you were clear, it wasn't, this is how we did it, and we did it this way. No, it was, this is why, this is exactly what happened. And you consistently, during every, I know that our school, you know, may have a few incidents, but during every incident, you always make it a point to communicate with the families, with staff, and with students, which I, you know, personally really do appreciate. And I just want to really, really applaud you on that work, you know, I'm proud to have you as my principal and students, it does not go unnoticed. I know that there's always criticism, especially with the student leaders, you know, I was there, but the vast majority, I would say, of students do appreciate being communicated with and do see the work you're doing, and I just can't applaud you enough for that great work. So, I just want to say thank you, and again, so happy that, and so honored that you're my principal, and that I'm able to go to a school where, you know, our principal is really communicative with the student body. So, just wanted to say thank you and highlight that work from my perspective as a student at your school. So, thank you so much.
Just wanted to acknowledge, too, the partners that you mentioned that came to the meeting, that's really important. And when you said that, I recall the day that you had the meeting with the community was the day that the board had their meeting with the Maryland Municipal League. And so, Mayor Ashton had a space in your school where she kind of was coming back and forth onto the meeting.
Yes, that's right.
Right, I remember, I just, that just hit me, that she said, I'm at Richard Montgomery High School right now, and so I didn't know what the meeting was about, but when you just said that, I remembered that that must have been what it was. But she felt that it was so important that she missed a good bit of the annual meeting, which that was more important, I felt like, knowing that now, that she was there. But our local elected officials do have a vested interest in our schools, and so we're really blessed in that way in Montgomery County, that they care a lot, that they will take time out of their schedule to come to a community meeting. So, I just, I appreciate that relationships, they do matter. Mr. Cram, did you have anything that you wanted?
I was just getting ready for the transition.
Dr. Zarchin, yes, yes, yes.
So, only this, Dr. Zarchin is here to talk about a different kind of school communications challenge, but I asked him to join us because a great deal of intentional work went into support a community that was asking for a lot of information, and I think he did a wonderful job, and I think if there was an accounting of hours in supporting the school in this case, it would be quite high. Dr. Zarchin?
Thank you. So, I want to first thank Principal Dini for her comments and really painting a picture of the complexity of the principalship and the weight. And I don't know that folks understand the weight of the work on a good day.
Right.
And then, you have a crisis or a safety issue, you can do 100 things right. If you don't get that one done perfectly and serve the needs of all stakeholders, none of those 100 things before matter, and that's the reality. There was a commercial for one of the amusement parks years ago, and the challenge was, bet you can't do it all. So, our principals are coming from various backgrounds with various skill levels in different areas, all strong leaders, instructional leaders, that's what we want our principals to be. But they're also in charge of facilities, safety, the mental health of students and staff and families. It is incredibly complex. And then, you add social media to that, the cell phone use, and the timeliness of desired responses. And I'll never forget, someone said at one point in the middle of a situation, do you want it fast or do you want it accurate? And that is a challenge that principals have many, many times throughout the year. And when you have a crisis situation where a parent is worried about their child in a school, accuracy doesn't always matter, they want it now, and that's understandable. But that is where communications comes in to help and support. That's where I feel my work as a director in our office, we are there to support, coordinate challenges. And it is not easy, but in any given situation like this, and I'll speak to one at Tilden Middle School, where on a Sunday afternoon, I received a phone call from Ms. Hopkins, principal at Tilden, that a staff member made some incredibly troubling comments on social media. Also heard from other principals and some other folks later that afternoon. So, immediately, I gave Mr. Adams a call to give him a heads up, reached out to Mr. Cram, letting him know that we are going to have to respond, that we've got staff members who are going to be concerned, students, families, and mind you, this is shortly after the attacks on October 7th. So, tensions, fear, just anxiety was already high, especially in this school community. So, the coordination to support the principal to doing right by all stakeholders was incredibly important to me and everyone involved. We had human resources involved, Office of School Support and Well-Being, all our student services joined in. On Monday, the principal sent a letter out to the community, sharing what happened and acknowledging that the staff member was on administrative leave. That was the start of the work. Students who were in the class were impacted, students from various religions, you know, the first thought is, well, we have Jewish students in the class we need to care for. Well, we had Muslim students, we had students of other faith that we had to care for. This was a teacher students looked up to. It was a valued and trusted member of the school community. So, trying to address that, so counseling was involved, social workers. A real important meeting for us was sitting down with the cluster PTSA leadership and hearing different perspectives. What does the community need? So, in those conversations, we want to know what the school system does in times like this. Where is this addressed in curriculum? A long list of questions that I certainly couldn't answer on my own, the principal didn't have all the answers. So, we brought folks together, had several meetings across offices to make sure we met the needs of the students, staff, and community. So, that the next step was planning a community meeting where we could talk about, present information, and then answer questions. So, we presented a great deal of information, did not get to, you know, listening to concerns to the depth that we wanted to. So, there is another meeting that will be scheduled this month. So, this is November 12th, the information came to our attention, and we are still working through and trying to address this. So, again, the complexity of issues that principals face, we count on them to know the pulse of the community, know who to go to, but as far as, you know, our office and my role coordinating those supports, not only for the school stakeholders, but for the principal, is incredibly important. We want to do it timely, but we want to make sure we don't miss anything as well. So, just, that's a little bit, and I'll turn it over for questions. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. I don't think our community is aware of how much time and effort goes into trying to ensure that our school community has their questions answered, that there's a sense of safety, and I don't know who stated it, it might have been, I don't want to pronounce her name wrong, Michelle Asorfor Andrews, that you want to get back to a sense of normalcy, right? And sometimes, that doesn't happen as quickly as we would like, and so I do think it's important that the community hears and knows what work went into helping support the Tilden community, as well as what's continuing to happen. So, thank you, Dr. Zarchin, for coming and talking about that. I don't know if everybody knows what all we do, and I know that there are a variety of incidents that happen at schools, not just specific to Tilden, but in other instances where there might be some hate and bias incidents happening and occurring, that this level of work goes in at the various schools. So, thank you for coming and sharing and letting us know that the work has not ended and that it continues, and that we're supporting our students and staff in a variety of ways. Mr. Cram, did you have any? Your light's on, I'm trained that when light goes on, I want you to be able to comment and say whatever.
Only to say this, that I think we have seen today that communications is foundational to everything that we do. We're educators, we're a school system, we're supporting students and families in a variety of ways, and every aspect of that communications is there, which is why we're committed to growing and improving what we do. You grow through what you go through, right? So, let's find out what's important, what's next, and what's an improvement, and we've heard some of that today.
Okay. Well, you shared a lot, thank you.
I have a comment.
That is fine, Ms. Yang, go ahead.
So, thank you, Principal Dini and Dr. Zarchin. I actually, I think what I take away from both of your sharing is how important that face-to-face communication with the community is. I was at the conversation with the Walter Johnson Cluster, and I'm so glad to hear you to say, hey, we're doing another one, because this is ongoing work, right? For our families, that just demonstrate our willingness to always improve. Nothing is. Nothing is resolved just in, many things is ongoing work that, that we need to do, right, in terms of addressing hate and biases, concerns, or, or safety and security is always ongoing. So I'm very happy to hear that. I think, I think today, among our conversations, I think we want to create understanding, you certainly have helped me, that we do plan ahead, we do plan ahead, we do realize, recognize speed is important, so we have regular communication. And we do want to be transparent, but we are responsibly transparent, and that every situation is afterwards that we, we review, reevaluate, then we, we continue to, to improve. I think above all these though, is that our, you know, I think, like you said, we can do 100 things right, but if we get one thing wrong, that's what stuck, and that's what has the impact, right? So I think about all these, the humility and the humanized approach is what will tie all this together. And, and, and so I really do want to, I think this is a very great conversation.
Thank you.
And it's something our community cares deeply about, you know? And I think we have come a long way, truly, because I remember with my older kids now, we used to just get one at the end of the school day. Today, this happened, but now with ongoing, we really have come a long way. Thank you.
Yeah. So I have one more question, this is for Principal Dini. You know, the board has a policy on community and family engagement, but do you feel as though, and I don't, I don't want you to speak for all your colleagues, but just for yourself, do you feel like there's a sense of responsibility for you to figure out how to show your community how to engage with the school?
I think that, can you, that's a question.
So, so.
I'm like thinking about.
We make this, so I'm, so I'm kinda, I think I'm kinda making it broad, but we make the assumption that our families know how to engage with the school, right? That they know what that looks like, they know what it feels like, but oftentimes I, I find that not everybody knows how to engage, or they engage in different ways. And do you feel like, as a principal, what helps you do your job better is if in some way, shape or form, through your community meetings that you might have, that might be sparked by a serious incident, that you're having to teach or show people how to engage with, with you, with the school community?
Within my own community.
Yeah, within your own community, yeah.
So I think, I think as a principal, you know, in a time when we know that there's a lot of diversity in our community.
Sure.
I think every principal kind of needs to assess where they are with their community in that regard. I, just as an example, I, I was at Blair High School for a couple of years, and I helped start a parent group called Los Padres there. And that group continues, and I'm trying to create something like that at Richard Montgomery, but it's like in the baby stages, right? And you, it's sometimes a challenge because you want members of your community to engage, but sometimes you need parent volunteers.
Sure.
Right? And so one of my goals at Richard Montgomery is, you know, the Rockville community versus the Silver Spring community. Silver Spring community has been a very diverse community for decades, right? The Rockville community, it's a little more recent, and I think that every community is different in Montgomery County. So we may, in some communities, be playing catch-up.
Yes.
With those relationships and cultivating those parent leaders within our communities that we can partner with. I think the parent and student partnership between school staff and the principal is really the key to trust and communication. And so what has been really, really helpful, I will tell you as a principal, because we, we can't do everything.
Right.
For example, our Bridge to Wellness Program, we have two Latina care man, a care manager and the mental health therapist that are Spanish-speaking, and then we have a member of identity that's at our school, right? And so that has actually expanded our ability to reach our parents, so that it's not fully a, you know, school leadership-directed relationship, right? It's a more organic relationship, and I would love to see more of that, because, like I said, I think, I think schools around the system are all at different places with that. I was fortunate at Blair that I had parents that wanted.
Yes.
To just jump in and do this with me. And at Richard Montgomery, I'm trying to build the same thing. So I, I, I think that answers your question.
Yeah, no, it did, it did. And then do you also find a way through the school improvement meetings, particularly in the summer? I know that principals have the ability to invite parents to come and take part in the meetings.
Yes.
And I've heard from some parents that it helps them to, to feel like a part of the, of what's going on at that school, and they learn and, and, and figure out just so much more in that way. So that, yeah, I, I don't know if everybody's able to do that.
Yes.
Because you could invite people, and then they just may not be able to basically.
So that is an important part of our school improvement process. I think what's important for parents is, and Mr. Said kinda keyed in on this, I think as principals, we have to think about every audience that we're communicating to.
Sure.
Right? And so with school improvement, I can't show parents that document, right? That's a, that's a, like a internal, and I mean, I could, I could share with them, I could show them where it's available, but we really need to create questions and messaging that allow them to engage in the real questions that we have for them as parents. So I really, over the summer, what I do is I create a, there's a day within our leadership team, it's, I, I've, my, my latest name is Community Think Tank, where I get students and parents together and invite them to come and, and hope they come. But then if they don't come, that's okay, we could keep trying, we keep trying, so, yeah.
That second question was an afterthought, but the first one was mainly what I really wanted to know and to hear and see, like, what you grapple with, or if it's easy, if it's hard, but you were perfect in responding, that every community is different and your approach is different and based on your relationships. And I know that you've been at Richard Montgomery, well, how, two, three?
This is my third year.
Your third year, right. And it seems like you've been there for quite some time too. But I remember you at Tacoma Park Middle School.
Correct, yes, yeah.
And how involved and engaged you were there and what that looked like. And so looking forward to more great things from you at Richard Montgomery High School.
Thank you.
And just thank you both for coming to, sharing the work. I think it's really important that our community hears and knows what we're doing at every step of the way, and in our effort and in this moment to be more transparent, right? We just want people to know that we have their best interests at heart, as board members, my colleagues, that the discussion and the topics that we have at this committee meeting are not topics that have come up as a result of what Chris thinks, that myself and my colleagues should be talking about, but it's intentionality that my colleagues and I have put forward to say, "We're listening to the community, we're hearing what they want to hear more about, and this is where this topic has come from today, as well as the ones that we'll hear in March and, and towards the end of the year." So just thank you all for being willing to participate.
And I just wanted to add to, to Dini's comment, first of all, thank you to both of you, but thank you, you had a really rough week, we were all, we were all like rooting for you. But just to her comment of that every principal, you know, that's kind of your kingdom, that's, you know your community, you know the challenges, and also, but not every principal has that exposure that you have, right? That there, we have principals in different places who might not be exposed to, to a very diverse community and so on. So that's where I think the system needs to jump in, because I think that's where some of the challenges are when it comes to communication. Because it's not just, you know, it's not just being like, you know, sending out the email, boom, boom, I'm done, I'm done with communication, right? So the essence of helping schools understand the complexities of that, I think that is on the system.
Yeah.
And like you said, in different areas, like at Blair, you have established community there, so you're gonna have that, but you might not have that, you know, in the Up County area, and in Damascus area, in the Cluxburg area, right? Where some of our schools are becoming, in the Germantown area, where some of our schools are becoming more and more diverse every day. And so having that component for me as a member of this board is so vital, and, and there's absolutely, in my opinion, nothing wrong of saying, "Hey, I don't have those skills, I don't know how to communicate with, you know, communicate with this community." And for our team, whoever they are, but our team also needs to represent that community when it comes to communication. And I think some of the work needs to also be done in that area, in order for us then to be able to, be able to meet the needs of such a diverse community.
We agree, we agree. And you know what, I think Dr. Zarchin being here is a perfect example, and I do believe that, well, I'm hoping that all our principals that need that additional support will call on it. But I, if I'm not mistaken, I thought that Tilden might have said, you know what, this is an all-hands-on-deck type of situation, that they wanted more support to be able to go through this, because it is really important that our community knows that we're here to listen and to understand, and where we don't have that knowledge or information, they do lean on central office in that way, right? So that was a good example of something that happened, where leadership knows that they need to lean on others for additional support. And then I'll go to Ms. Yang after, Mr. Cram, do you want to make a comment?
With this, I, I love that point, because, Ms. Yang, you may remember because you were at that meeting, but it was also a great number of other middle school principals came to support that principal at Tilden. Principals know best how important that communication is, and they came to support her.
In picking up this topic of support, I think the board is an oversight body, but the board also can be support for the school system, for the work you are doing. So our associate, our communication, our director, our principals, you are boots on the ground, because time has changed how complex situations are. So if you find in your daily practice that if any policies or regulations that need to be updated to better reflect what we are doing now, then do let us know. Or maybe it doesn't elevate it to a policy change, but there might be differences in practices, different ways we approach it, different discussion we need to have public in, do let us know, because this is a partnership, and these are working committees, and that is the purpose of us being together. So love all the information sharing, but if there are things that we should follow up and look at and examine, we, we really welcome that very much so.
Yes, and as policymakers, we can make that decision too, that we need to review and amend and revise. Mr. Adams, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to the comment that Ms. Rivera Oven was mentioning. For me, I hear you, I think that that's a, our core value of equity, and in terms of how we support principals in terms of the idea that their community might look different, and we need to be able to bridge and support that community in a way that the principal can't do by themselves. And so I think that that point is well-taken in terms of the work that we need to do in our office to ensure that we are responsive to the needs of the community. You know, as a former principal of a bilingual school, I know that I relied on a lot of central office support as well as my team. So we want to make sure that our, our principals are equipped to be responsive in that way. So I, I just want to reiterate that that is heard, and the next step with our, in our office, in alignment with the work that we do with safety and security.
Thank you. So it is 12:19, we've had such a great dialogue and conversation around the overall communication of MCPS as well as what's happening at the local level. So we really appreciate you coming and sharing, everyone that's come here today, I appreciate the comments and suggestions that my colleagues made today, and I will say to you all, thank you and have a great rest of the day and week. Mr. Cram, did you want to?
I just wanted to say, if you would allow, Maria Campos from our Language Assistance Services Unit.
Oh, yes.
I know we're way over time, but if she could submit her comments.
Absolutely.
To the board for your information, she just wanted to take a moment to talk about the increasing requests and work of her unit, and I, I think given the time, it might be best.
Come on down. Oh, she wants to send it? What do you want to do, because you're here, you stay here the whole entire time?
Okay.
Come on down, absolutely, we do not want to ignore you, I was being, I was, you know what, I was speeding along here.
I was wondering why she was there as long as.
Okay, yes, no, we want to hear from you. Everyone else, if you need to leave, you can, thank you.
But then here's now my question.
So a vital part of our, our office, and the work in her unit only increases day over day over day.
Yes.
And I thought just a few moments at the end of this meeting for you to hear a report on that.
Absolutely.
That would be beneficial.
Well, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Buenas tardes. Thank you for the opportunity. As you may know, the Language Assistance Services Unit, LASU, has provided interpretation and translation services for MCPS over 14 years. These services facilitate and encourage communication between MCPS schools and district staff and culturally and linguistically diverse students and families. This allows all of our families the opportunity to be active participants and partners in their children's education, and to students and families to feel welcome in their schools and our school system as a whole. I want to provide an overview of our services and processes. To date, we offer in-person and virtual interpretations in over 42 languages. We have an in-house database called Laris that all schools and offices can access to request interpretation services. When a request is received, one of our four language service assistants takes care of that, trying to find an available interpreter. This isn't just a matter of finding someone with availability, but matching the interpreter to the request based on the type of meeting or event requested and interpreter expertise. Each type of assignment requires an interpreter with different skills. On average, we receive between 75 to 100 new requests daily, along with multiple reschedules and cancellations. Since July 1st, we have received over 11,000 requests for interpretation services, with the five top languages being Spanish, Amharic, French, Portuguese and Mandarin, commonly known as Chinese. These requests are filled by the 123 temporary part-time interpreters working for LASU. 123. Thank you, sorry to interrupt. An increase of 43 compared with FY '23. This school year, we are excited to offer our interpreters the opportunity to receive a professional interpreter in a special education certificate through the University of Georgia Center for Continuing Education, thanks to the partnership with the Special Education Office. They received a reducing over identification Special Education Grant from MSD that will be used to provide this professional development opportunity to our interpreters, to increase their knowledge and ability for special education assessments, assignments. Language Line is a service that is also managed by LASU. It offers over-the-phone interpretation services in over 50 languages, and their services are widely used by MCPS staff. Language Line is often used when LASU is unable to fulfill a request or when a school or district staff has a short encounter with a student or family member. We received feedback from our staff about the Language Line connection time, which led to this year's update in how staff can now access Language Line through Inside, a mobile app that all MCPS employees can access using any device of their choice, reducing the connection time by at least two minutes. While discussing the option to improve connection time with the Language Line, I learned of their direct response service. The direct response service allows families to call in to reach an interpreter before even connecting to a school or a district employee. It is an additional resource for families that will remove a potential barrier in communication. Of course, this service is provided at an additional cost, and it's something that we can keep in mind for the future. Through our translation services, we translate a variety of school and district-level communications into seven languages, Amharic, French, Korean, Portuguese, Spanish and traditional Chinese and Vietnamese. We have one full-time in-house translator per language and at least two temporary part-time proofreaders per language. All requests are processed through our translation management system, TMS, and each school and office has staff with access to this system. The type of documents translated by LASU include, but are not limited to, letters, invitations, flyers, IPs, booklets, course bulletins, school menus, community message, emergency messages, policies and regulation, et cetera. Once a project is received through TMS, it is reviewed and processed, two days are assigned based on the priority, length, complexity and number of the projects already in queue. Since July 1st, LASU has received requests to translate over 3,000 documents with over 10,000 pages, that is more than 5 million words translated in the last seven and a half months.
Repeat that part again for me, please.
We have received requests to translate over 3,000 documents with over 10,000 pages, which is 5 million words in the last seven and a half months. LASU is working at capacity to ensure all requests for interpretations and translation services are fulfilled, services that are mandated by the state and federal. services are fulfilled, services that are mandated by state and federal law to be provided by public school districts. Our priority is to guarantee that our culturally and linguistically diverse students and families have meaningful language access to MCPS services, programs, and activities. Lastly, I would like to leave you with a quote from the recently published National Code of Ethics of Translators in Education from the American Association of Interpreters and Translators in Education. It reads, "Translators translate meaning for meaning. They do not translate word for word, and the only way to achieve an accurate, impartial, and complete translation is by exercising cultural awareness. This is the difference that every individual working at LASU provides, and I say it as a reminder that machine translations and AI are tools to use, not substitutions for effective and culturally responsive language access."
Very good, oh my goodness, I like that quote that you left us with, that was, that's important. So repeat one thing for me. You said we have 123 interpreters.
Yes.
One full-time?
One full-time translator per language in-house, which are seven, and then at least two temporary part-time proofreaders per language.
And two temporary part-time. And you said, we've received 3,000 documents with over 10,000 pages in the last seven months.
Since July.
Since July, wrote that down, too. Well, you said, since July, we've registered over 11,000 requests, right? At least 11,000 requests.
11,000 are requests for interpretation services, interpretation verbal, translation written.
It's written, yes.
So translation, we receive 3,000, over 3,000 documents, and for interpretation, over 11,000 requests.
And she manages those growing requests for interpretation with temporary, part-time folks that need to be scheduled and have other responsibilities in their lives.
You only have two temporary part-time.
For each language. Yeah.
No.
No, the interpreters are temporary, but all of the interpreters are temporary part-time employees. They have other jobs, and that's why we hire on a weekly basis. We hire interpreters on a weekly basis, because we cannot cover all of the requests that we have only with the people that we have, because they don't work full-time for us.
Okay, I misunderstood, I thought you said that we had a, we had a full-time translator for each of the languages.
That's for the translation.
Which is seven.
That's translation.
Translation.
Not interpretation.
Ah, okay, that's too much, okay.
So, I just, just very quickly, because this is really close to home for me, because as a former interpreter and translator, who did this, putting myself through school, I think it's hard for, for people who have not done this kind of work to understand the complexity of this work. And I'm still trying to process that we have temporary part-time people in these positions, because by law, and correct me if I'm wrong, we have to provide the services, it's a federal law. So we either pay in-house, or we pay by contracting companies, correct? So I think this is a discussion for another time, maybe with, with our.
For sure.
With our committee, because of the diversity that we have, again, and you mentioned the top seven languages, the fact that you guys get daily, daily, 75 to 100 requests.
Right.
Daily, todos dias pues.
Todos dias.
Todos dias, 75 to 100 requests, right? And, and then you have to match them with expertise, right? Because then it could be a meeting with a nurse, then you want somebody that has medical, you know, the medical burbage. It could be a 504 plan, then you want somebody who has been trained in that, special ed, then you want somebody trained in that. So the complexity of it, to manage it, so I think it is at the service to the community and the, and the, and the children of this county, if we do not have a better understanding and to ensure that you guys have the staff.
Enough staff.
To be able to support the requests, which they get more complex, because the other day, we saw in our, in our report with the Special Education, that we are seeing more kids in Special Education who are ESOL or LEP, right? Which that means, then you're going to be getting more requests to be able to do the value, which are complex, which are not easy. That is interpretation, I'm only talking about the interpretation part. Then we're going to move over to the translation part. Then the translation part, which you said it beautifully.
We only have one person per language.
You have one, one.
That needs to translate legal documents, medical documents, all the types of documents. Normally, in the perfect world, you will have one translator for legal, one translator for medical, and our translator has to translate all of them.
So whoever that person is.
They're amazing.
Que Dios los bendiga, like, God bless them.
Amen.
Because I'm telling you, that is, that is, as somebody who has done it, it is monumental work. And the, the issue that I have with that is also timely, right? Because as you said, if we, if we're working with, you know, to get the documents and so on, so we can get a kid registered to go, oh, we're trying to understand the vaccination, immunization, you know, from their country, so we can get them to school started, I mean, there's, there's a lot of nuances that go into that work, right? And you have one person for each language. So I think this is a priority that we need to look at as a board and as a system, and we need to evaluate whether we have the best infrastructure in place to be able to meet the demand, which is required by law for us to do. And just, I'm thinking, I don't know how many Spanish-speaking students we have, like 55, 56,000, and we have one person to be able to support. Now, that every Spanish-speaking, you know, student needs LEP, but we know that most of them do, right? So, but we have one, one person for that position.
One person, and then the temporary part-time proofreader that support the work.
So anyway, this is, I would like us, as a committee, to bring this back, because this has a direct impact, just on the, on the quality, and also on direct impact on our, on our students, on our parents, and also on the staff. Because it's very frustrating when you want to help a family and that you, you can't unless you have the tools.
Absolutely. Yes, so whenever we have conversations here, it's not, this is not the final conversation. We had you here for the very reason that you, we wanted to know all the detailed information, and I see Ms. Elba Garcia in the audience, so she knows that this was an important topic for us to have, and so we're glad that you were able to come here and share with us today. And yes, no, appreciate that. And then you're here with a smile. Right? So we appreciate that, too, right? Because we ask a lot. But no, thank you for sharing, and we'll continue the conversation, and I'll let Ms. Yang comment.
Thank you, I just want to express my gratitude for your unit's hard work. I know it's a lot of work, thank you.
You sat here patiently the entire meeting, thank you for listening.
It wasn't very interesting.
Yeah, no, so at this time, it's 12:33, right? And at some point, we're going to be able to get this committee to adjourn in the two-hour time, but no, but you know, each time we have people come to this table, it's really, really great partners, and it's a really engaging conversation, and sometimes it's just hard to rush it, rush you through. So I, that's why I'm glad, we wanted you to come down, you sat here, we had you on the agenda to be able to come forward. And I think it was important that people were able to hear the work that's going on and what's needed, as opposed to us getting it in the email. I think Dr. Moran mentioned earlier, sometimes the face-to-face is just important. So thank you. And thank you all, and at this time, we will adjourn, and we will see you all in March, where we will have our students come and speak with us and share with us what's on their mind. So again, thank you, and have a good day. We adjourn.[1772.96]